We'll call this meeting of Lima City Council to order. We begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Councilor Tevin, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Lord, please help guide us this evening as we do the business of the city. Help guide our decisions that they are in the best interest of those that we serve. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nieper.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Lo.
Here.
Mr. Tevin.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Here.
Ms. Townsend.
Here.
And Mr. Nixon.
Here. Before we start with the agenda, I'd like to welcome the students from Bath High School's government class. They are seniors at Bath High School, and one of their requirements is to attend the city council meeting, so hopefully you learn a lot. If there's any questions afterwards, feel free to talk to any of the council members. There are no public hearings, no privilege of the floor on the consent calendar.
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
I move that Item B on the consent calendar be received and filed, and Item A be received, filed, and approved.
The motion in the second, with a little jazz background, is to receive, file, and approve Item A, and to receive and file Item B. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Communication number one be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding a transfer to O-H Bella Inc. at 500 North Davis.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lo.
I move that Communication number two be received and filed. The clerk authorized the file with no objections.
Second.
To the Ohio Division of Liquor Control.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number two, and to authorize the clerk to file notice with the Ohio Division of Liquor Control of no objection from council. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number three.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to grant an aerial easement to McDonald's Corporation.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that Communication number three be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number four.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to accept a gift from Blacktop Ceiling Inc.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that Communication number four be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number five.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to purchase accused mainline camera truck.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that Communication number five be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Next, we have reports of officials. First item is LACCA and New Lima, the Housing Counseling Program. So.
Mr. President, councilors, I just wanted to introduce our speakers. They will be brief, but there have been changes in the home funding and the legislation that we use to fund our housing programs. Because of that, we've done a little tweaking to our program, and we wanted to share that information with you. This is the beginning of the new year, the new fiscal year, for funding our housing counseling program. We've had a lot of tremendous success with it, and Veronica McLaren from LACCA is here to talk about the housing counseling portion, and if needed, Scott Franger, who is now the Director of New Lima Housing for the Future, who assists in processing the applications, is also here to answer questions. Scott, I believe, has the applications to pass out to you so you can take a look at them, but Veronica is here to share some positive information about the program.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
I'll talk to you briefly tonight and give you a few updates on where we are with our year, this year, and the sales and purchases of our homes. We're excited to say that at the end of the year, we received our HUD approval through -- that's through NeighborWorks of America. With our HUD approval letter, this opened the flow of us to be able to close on a few more homes. So this allowed us to offer housing counseling to 34 participants, down payment assistance dollars to 17 families, and this is a total mortgage value of $891,148, and that's in the community here in Lima. This is an investment from the City of Lima of $108,000, so I think that's an applause to our program here and how it's able to serve in our community. We provide both workshops that are group sessions, and we also provide the one-on-one housing counseling. The one-on-one housing counseling is what we consider one of our strongest points, and that's where we offer the handholding for those individuals that want to purchase a home, and they don't have the total understanding of those processes. So 62 sessions were offered last year with the program. LACCA partners with New Lima, as Amy said, and New Lima, the role that they play in this portion of the program, they do almost like the underwriting process. So they do what the banks would consider underwriting. They calculate the amount of down payment assistance that the individuals will receive. They handle the recertification process of those individuals that go through the program, and they have to recertify every six months. Some new changes, and when I say this, I almost feel like a broken record, because HUD is constantly changing, mortgages are constantly changing, the lending terms are changing, and that's one of the things we offer our updates on that. One of the newest changes, effective October 1st, 2013, LACCA's down payment assistance dollars will be scaled to the need of the income in need of the applicants. So what this means is the amount of down payment assistance that they will receive, it might be less than the amount that they were quoted previously, and that flat rate used to be $10,000. That's if they purchased within a targeted area. The flat rate beneath that is $6,000. That's the max that they would receive if not purchasing in a targeted area. Now, for individuals that are at 80% of median income, they're going to receive a little less, because it's going to be scaled to their income. Those individuals that are 30% of area median income, they're going to receive a little bit more. Now, this is almost like the subsidy that would be received through Allen Metropolitan Housing. It's a subsidy to your need, your income and your need. Some of these changes are already occurring. We are notifying the banks, lenders, the participants, that these changes will begin as of January 2014. The letters are going out. We're communicating, trying to make this a smooth transition and process. New Lima has updated a lot of the policies, forms, and information to streamline the participants through the program a lot quicker, and we're already off and rolling. Individuals are contacting us now, and we're at five closings already, so we don't foresee this being too much of a change. That's going to cause too many difficulties, but there will be a lesser amount that individuals will receive. We typically like to bring a success story with us. We weren't able to get this individual to come in tonight, but she did write her story up. She's at work. Alicia is a single African-American mother. Alicia was referred to LACCA's homeownership program from Metropolitan Housing Authority. Alicia put in an application for homeownership classes in June of 2011. Alicia was accepted into the program June 13th, 2011. She completed class with the goal of wanting to purchase her dream home. During Alicia's follow-up visits, she realized that she could obtain a better home loan if her credit score were higher. So she was encouraged by LACCA's housing counselors to complete LACCA's wealth prep class. She completed the class, paid off her debt, and it strengthened her credit score. In August of 2011, Alicia's credit score had raised by 12 points. Alicia continued to work with her housing counselor to earn credits. She informed the counselor that she wasn't ready to purchase her home yet, and she would contact us when she was ready and interested again. October 15th, 2012, Alicia contacted her housing counselor wanting to continue her pursuit of homeownership. She was referred to continue her wealth prep credits, building towards her down payment dollars. In building her credit score and paying off her debt, she started her follow-up visits with her housing counselor in financial literacy. December 2012, she completed that portion of the program. She designed the layout of her dream home, and she worked hard at completing her credits. On January 25th, 2013, her hard work paid off, as she received preapproval for an amazing interest rate of 3.25%. Alicia's choice to delay homeownership got her a quality home with a quality interest rate, and she completed both homeownership and wealth prep classes and became debt-free in just two years. Alicia purchased her home with confidence on April 19th, 2013.
Wow.
So participants, that kind of draw the process out, it's not necessarily a negative thing. It can be a positive also. Any questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
First of all, that is super. That's great.
Thank you.
And a couple of questions I'd ask. How many -- she went through three different programs. She went through -- first, she went through the counseling program, and she just took up on her own and continued going so she can get her credit rating down low. And that's great.
Yeah.
That is an exciting story. And 3.2, it's hard to get that these days.
The program definitely encourages individuals to get the best score, so.
Right. And appreciate you guys pushing her on there, I mean, being there, and because you guys plays a liaison there to make sure it continues going and keep moving in the right direction with the credit.
Absolutely.
That's great.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, under Reports of Officials, Chief Martin, regarding crime statistics.
Okay, Mr. President, members of council, first of all, I want to thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight, because this is certainly a good story that I think needs to be told, certainly for council's information, but actually, I think also so the entire Lima community can have an idea as to what has been happening with the crime picture in Lima. And if you notice, I am wanting to talk about the UCR Part 1 crime data from 2008 to 2013 through the present. So that brings up the first question, which is why would I start with 2008? Well, two very significant things happened in 2009. Those two significant occurrences was, first of all, after the election of Sheriff Chris in 2008. He took office in January of 2009, and in keeping a campaign promise that he had made, immediately began working within Sheriff -- or, excuse me, within Chief Garlock in order to bring together the Allen County Drug Unit and the Patient Unit under one organization, so that, again, there would be less duplication of efforts, greater cooperation. And that did take place fairly early on in the year 2009. And in addition to bringing the Patient Unit and the County Crime Unit together, that also led to additional cooperative efforts in special operations, such as the Operation Shields, which have been very successful, which actually not only involved just the Police Department and the Sheriff's Department, but actually law enforcement agencies throughout all of Allen County. In addition to the increased cooperation, we have also, in 2009, the Lima Police Department began the implementation of our pinpoint policing, and that is in keeping with an industry best practice. It's known in some places as hotspot policing, intel-led policing, but regardless of what name it carries, wherever you go, it basically is a simple concept in which you first determine where the highest crime, highest problem areas are, and then you focus your resources in those high-crime areas. In addition to putting the resources there, you also focus on problem-solving efforts, not just, again, looking at, you know, having people in the area, but also trying to actually target the specific problems and quality-of-life issues that seem to lead to even other more minor things, and sometimes even more major violent crimes. So then that also brings us to the next question, which has to be, have these efforts been productive? So again, in order to have some way of measuring the productivity or the usefulness, the effectiveness of these efforts, we look at the UCR Part 1 crimes. And the total offenses will include homicide, rape, robbery, assaults, that's all assaults, both simple and aggravated, burglary, larceny, and various classification motor vehicle theft. A little bit later on, I will also mention Part 1 violent crimes, so I want to make sure that you knew that those offenses include homicide, rape, robbery, and aggravated assaults As you can see from the next slide, in 2008 for the year, we had 4,828 total UCR Part 1 offenses. By 2012, you can see that we reduced that by nearly 1,000 total crimes, or total offenses, to 3,859. And again, with the exception of 2011, when we saw a slight uptick from the previous year, a total of 15 actual offenses, we have seen a very steady and definite decline in those numbers. If you want to look at it in percentages, you know, again, I've also included a slide that has the year-to-year percentage decreases or increase, but overall, from 2008 to 2012, we saw a 20.1% decrease in the total number of UCR Part 1 offenses, which, again, is a, I think by any estimation, a very, very significant decrease. Also, if you're like me, and you tend to be, somebody who likes to be able to look at things so that I can grasp the concepts better, I have also, again, I've included a simple graph with the trend line, and as you can see, there's a very distinct downward trend line within these numbers. So now, how does 2013 compare? Obviously, again, we do not have an entire year's data, so in order to be able to have some type of an apples-to-apples comparison to see where we're going this year compared to last year, I looked at the first nine months of this year, which is the complete data set that's available to me at this point in time, and I compared it to the same time period in 2012. And as you can see, we went from 3,055 total offenses in the first nine months of last year to 2,716 offenses this year, or 11.1% reduction in the total offenses. And I think even more significantly, again, is if you look at the decrease in violent crimes for the first nine months of this year compared to last year, we've actually seen a reduction of more than 26%, almost 27% in total violent offenses. So again, very, very significant decreases, and we're seeing that trend still going downward where we want it to be. Again, for those of -- for those people out there that are like myself, maybe on GTV2 or any member of council or anyone in the audience, again, I wanted to include a visual depiction of what this actually looks like, both in terms of the total offenses as well as the violent offenses, and again, I think this helps to demonstrate just how significant these decreases really have been. Now, also, for anyone that's familiar with Stephen Covey's work, you know, he speaks a great deal in his book, Seven Habits, about effectiveness versus efficiency. And I think in looking at the numbers and seeing the decrease, you can see that the work of the law enforcement agencies within Allen County has been effective, but has it also been efficient? And in comparing budgets, in 2008, the total general fund expenditures for 2008, the actual expenditures were $8,153,684. By 2012, for the year of 2012, we actually spent $283,741 less. And unlike the federal government, as each member of council knows, when we talk about reductions in our budget, we're talking about actually having less dollars to spend, as opposed to just slowing the rate of growth. And so again, you know, in spite of inflationary increases that were occurring in terms of personnel cost, equipment cost, et cetera, we were still able to spend well over a quarter of a million dollars less in 2012 as compared to 2008, but yet, again, saw those very significant decreases in the UCR Part 1 total offenses. I don't want to leave the impression that I believe that the cooperation, which I mentioned earlier, and the pinpoint policing are the only factors that have helped to reduce this crime. I think there are certainly other significant factors as well, some that are maybe a little less easy to measure, but for instance, the cooperation from the community, the willingness of the community to get involved and to call us when they see something they think is suspicious, and we certainly want to continue and encourage that. But also, I think it does demonstrate, though, the very hard work that the men and women of the Lima Police Department and law enforcement throughout this county put in on a day-to-day basis, not just the police officers, but also the civilian personnel involved in that effort as well. And again, I think this also helps to demonstrate, one of the reasons why certainly I am so very proud of everyone that works at the Police Department, from the majors, through patrol officers, and again, all the civilian employees as well. And so I also thought it was, again, very important for council to be able to see this, and if anyone has any questions, I will do my best to answer them.
Any questions for the chief? Mr. President? Just a comment. This is a good news story, and it does need to be shared, and good news doesn't sell. Okay? And I was thinking, when you were talking about, in addition to, you know, the causal factors that you've listed that have impacted us, the great work of our Police Department and the cooperation with the Sheriff's Department, I think the neighborhood associations, you know, the meetings that I've been involved in, when there's interaction with the Police Department, it's very, very helpful, much appreciated by the neighborhood associations, and I think that they are more than willing to share information and help understand what's going on in not only their neighborhoods, but in the city. So, good job and great report. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I've got a couple of things, and this is outstanding. This is great. And you love to see stuff like this, you know, the work you guys doing, neighbors coming up, talking more, and you know what's going on, not afraid for you, come to their houses, you know? I can pick up the telephone and call and say, hey, this is what's going on. You guys get right on it, and this is what, like Mr. Tevin was saying, this is something we want to see, you know, and how things going in the city of Lima, that we're moving in a direction, good direction, and not a bad story like we used to have two or three years ago. You'd be ready to put your head down, like, wow, you know? But now, you see this, and like you say, we need to take it out there. Let them see it, you know? Let the folks see what our city is doing, how we try to change different things about the Police Department.
Yeah, and I guess if I may, off of Mr. Glenn's comments, first of all, in terms of getting the -- and actually, I guess in echoing some of your comments too, Mr. Tevin, if there are any neighborhood associations or any other civic groups or anything that would like to have this presentation made to them, I will be more than happy to, if I can't make it, perhaps one of the division majors could or that, but somebody from the Police Department would be more than happy to come out and present these numbers so people can see it, have a chance to talk about it. The other thing is that, again, yes, we need, again, the continued participation of LACNIP, all the various neighborhood associations within LACNIP, and the community itself. And also, we don't believe that we can just rest on our laurels. I want to make sure I make that clear, too. We are continually looking for new innovations, new ways of applying technology, et cetera, that will allow us to hopefully continue pushing those numbers even farther and farther down.
Mr. President. Mr. Nieper.
I also want to commend the Police Department on the work they've done, and I think it also shows, you know, my favorite slide, unfortunately, is always the last slide that shows 283,741, and I think it goes to show, you know, really, the leadership in these departments, we've seen it with the Fire Department as well, that just spending money on safety services isn't necessarily the key. It's getting the right people in the right positions and, you know, enabling them to succeed, and I think this is one of those factors that shows we're doing more with less and being more effective at that, and I think that's a testament to the leadership that you and Chief Garlock in the early part of this and the senior management at the Police Department have shown, so thank you for that.
Thank you, chief. Appreciate it. The reports of the committees, the Human Resources Committee. Ms. Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. President. Everyone's had a copy of the committee report from October 21st. Actually, I was thoroughly getting it in this time. Anyway, I would like to move that this committee report be received, filed, and approved.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve the committee report as stated by, or is given to us by Councilor Townsend. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Evidently, a vacation gets you well-rested and.
I'm ready to go.
Efficient on doing reports. Ordinance 20913.
Loving special assessments for property maintenance charges on premises in the city of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Ordinance 209-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 20913 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
And Mr. Lo.
Yes. Ordinance 20913 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 21013.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Lima-Allen Convention Investors Bureau using funds from the Hotel Motel Tax.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Ordinance 21013 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 21013 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes. Ordinance 21113 has been passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 21113 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes. Ordinance 21113 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 21213.
Authorizing the mayor to grant an aerial easement to McDonald's Corporation.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that Ordinance Number 21213 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 21213 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
And Mr. Lo.
Yes. Ordinance 21213 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 21313.
Authorizing the mayor to accept a donation of services and product from Blacktop Ceiling Inc.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that Ordinance Number 213-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 21313 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
Just so that they receive the recognition, they are due, this is a donation from a local company. This, for as long as I've been on council, I believe they make a similar donation almost every year, just doing something they can to help our Parks and Recreation Department, which ultimately falls towards the bottom of the list oftentimes when it comes to capital improvements, and they help seal these parking lots and the bike path and other places around the parks to keep them looking nice for the residents while at the same time, hopefully prolonging their use over time, so.
Very good. Any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Lo.
I would like to say, well, I'm glad at the fact that they're doing this donation,